Regular meeting Tuesday, December 15th, 2020. We'll have the invocation by Councilmember Scott Irwin and the pledge of allegiance by Councilmember Don Williams. Please stand.
Please bow your heads. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day that you've given us. Lord, we have so much to be thankful for. This Christmas season, we're most thankful for your son, Jesus, who died for us on the cross. Lord, we are thankful for the numerous successful vaccines, Lord, and we pray for their successful rollout and for a quick wind down of the pandemic gripping the country. And, Lord, we pray for wisdom, Lord, in this council meeting today. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Please face the flag, repeat the pledge.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mr. Montgomery?
Here.
Mr. Larkin?
Here.
Mr. Irwin?
Here.
Mr. Darby?
Present.
Mr. Williams?
Here.
Mr. Free?
Here.
Mr. Harvey?
Here.
All right, can you read the announcement, please?
In accordance with L.A.R.S. 4219 and the Attorney General's Open Meetings Guidance, in order to meet quorum requirements, some Bossier City Council members may be involved in the meeting via telephone or video conference. If anyone is uncomfortable in coming to this meeting, they are welcome to call 318-549-4595 at this time for public comments on any agenda items in accordance with recently passed Act 302. You must state your name and address for the record, and you will be limited to three minutes for your comments. We will allow five for an item and five against an item in accordance with the adopted city council meeting rules. Please remember that this is not a question and answer session and that you must speak clearly and slowly so that we can understand you. Please know foul language, or the call will be disconnected and you will forfeit your right to speak.
He may be, who knows?
It's not me.
At least they're on the record. We're done.
It's over, yes, sir.
Need a motion to approve the minutes, December 1st, 2020, reading and per regular meeting and dispense with the reading. Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Yes, sir.
Be interesting to know who our guest is on the...
Phyllis says it's a ghost.
It's electronic.
Under new business, adopt a resolution changing the name of CenturyLink Center Drive to Brookshire Grocery Arena Drive, first and final reading.
So move.
Questions from the audience?
I'm sorry, who was the first and second?
Scott.
That was the first. There was an add-on there.
Questions from the audience? In 20 years, I've never heard that sound. Counsel, please cast your vote. Need to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Just a second, I'm almost there.
I'm sorry. All right, at this time, we'd like to, under ceremonial matters and recognitions of guests, we'd like to recognize the heroism of the Bossier City Police Department, the Bossier City Fire Department, Bossier Parish Sheriff's Office, and Louisiana State Police.
Hey, Jennifer, Phyllis said you may want to check the mic on the podium and turn it down.
Yeah, I was going to see maybe if that had anything to do with it.
While we're waiting on that, if I could have Captain Williams come join us today. So Deputy Chief Wayne Huddleston?
He's got the mic, sorry.
Chiefs are gone, and Chief McWilliams? All right, and y'all, everybody doing their space correctly here?
Close enough.
All right. On December 3rd, 2020, the Bossier City Police Department was investigating a possible shooting involving an 18-wheeler on I-220. The investigation led to the pursuit of a Chevy Avalanche, which was wrecked in the area of Airline and Shed Road. The police cars maneuvered their vehicles to spin the subject's vehicle to stop south of Shed at Misty Lane. The action allowed a passenger and a three-month-old child to escape unharmed. A standoff with the driver began, who had access to a gun, which he picked up multiple times, as members of the tactical negotiation team tried to talk the driver into surrendering. The Bossier City Police Department, the Bossier City Fire Department, Louisiana State Police, and the Bossier Sheriff's Department cooperated in the management of this critical incident, which ended with the individual in custody with only minor injuries from the crash in non-lethal force. This incident was managed to perfection seamlessly by all those agencies without the need for lethal force. This is a testament to the training and cooperation between all of these critical agencies. The equipment and assets that were used in handling this incident prove the value of the investment in keeping this city safe. The cooperation of all these agencies is a testament to the safety our citizens enjoy every day. I and my fellow councilmen and the mayor want to thank you for your excellent performance in critical incident management and all you do to provide a safe city and parish for our citizens here in Bossier. We hope that our bold message placed on our water tower, supporting and thanking first responders is a daily reminder of our appreciation of what you mean to this community. Thank you, gentlemen. To all you gentlemen, and the men and women, and all of law enforcement, and the fire department, and all first responders here in Bossier, in the state of Louisiana, and across the country, we salute you. Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank the city administrators for supporting us through the years. And as David mentioned, Mr. Montgomery mentioned, the assets that we have, the apparatus that we have is far beyond what most people in most of the country have, the armored vehicles, the armored skid steer such as that, which was just miraculous, helping us extract that gentleman from that vehicle. So I want to thank the city council for supporting us with the, when we do our budgets and supporting us. I want to especially thank Mr. Montgomery. When we were looking at doing the tactical skid steer, he took it out of his time to come out, and I think he might have been a little reluctant at first, but once he saw it in action, he was all in and helped us get that and secure the funds for it. So I just wanted to thank y'all for that. And thank all the law enforcement agencies that helped us out on this incident. Thank y'all.
I'll be very brief. I too would like to simply say thank you. It's such a pleasure to have this opportunity to serve such incredible and great people and such great leadership that we have today. I also want to say thank you to our troopers who came with me today. They actually do the, they're the boots on the ground. They do an amazing job, and their dedication and sacrifice is just unmeasurable. So again, thank you so very much, and we look forward to our continued partnership. Thank you.
Also want to say thank you for, we bring some stuff sometimes that looks a little crazy, but it actually works out in the end, even the drones that we had some of our firefighters flying, and we could keep an eye on the scene and an eye on the gun the whole time and relay the message to the police. But in all reality, probably eight years ago, we started training Unified Command with all these agencies, and that was a prime showing of what works out. And then when the pandemic hit, we really came together. So it's awesome to work with these great law enforcement officers and the fire department work hand in hand together. So thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Thank y'all for coming. Unfinished business?
Give me just one second. Please.
Yeah, no worries.
I think we're going to have to do it manually.
Our friend is back.
Still snoring. Wake him up.
We'll just do it.
I'm trying to get back.
We'll do it manually, it's fine.
Jennifer, you had to come today where the ghost was here, okay? Mess with your computer.
And while we're waiting, also, Phyllis unfortunately could not be here, but we had a voicemail message that I would have, we were going to play, which maybe before the end of meeting, we can ask Phyllis how we could play it. I'd certainly have that, like to have that for the record. It's incredible when you actually have citizens call and leave an inspiring message, as this lady did, and citizen of Bossier City. It's absolutely incredible, so.
I got the voicemail if you'd like.
Do you?
Sure.
Let's play it. You think we ought to put it down there? Or will that do it too?
Hello, this is Ruth Compton, living in Bossier. We've lived here 46 years, and the incident on Airline Drive today has proved how well the Bossier Police Department and the Sheriff's Office does their job every day, and I am so proud of how they handle things today. And no one was hurt except by the whoever that ran into people. But I want to thank you, and please pass this on. I really, really appreciate living in a safe town. Thank you.
That's absolutely wonderful. And Tracy, if you wouldn't mind if we could enter that into your public announcement so that the media has access to that as well? So I know in my tenure and 20 years here, that's one of the first times that I've received a call that was that complimentary, you know, of our public safety here in Bossier City. So thought it important that everybody hear that and it be on the record.
We're good now.
All right. See, we made use of that time in a very positive and effective manner.
Perfect. Adopt an ordinance appropriating $400,000 from the 2017 sales tax bond to fund beautification efforts along Phase 1 of the Walter O. Bigby Carriageway, final reading.
So move. Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Now I'm not getting your votes.
Did not get them?
No.
It's saying on here, 4-7. One day, we're going to go back to that old board.
I'm glad we held on to it.
Yes, sir.
Let me send it again. No, I'm not even showing y'all online.
All right. All in...
Sorry.
You ready?
Yes, sir. Who was the motion in the second on?
I made the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? Motion carries.
Okay, adopt an ordinance authorizing Mayor Lorenz Walker to execute the attached contract for professional services with Ginger Adam Corley, LLC for 2021.
Second.
Questions from the audience? You got the first and the second?
Yes, sir.
Not to interrupt you, she said refresh it if you want to.
Okay, do we want to try it on the next one, or do we want to redo that one?
We'll just say all in favor.
Aye.
Any nays?
Wait, hold on one second. Okay, we got Irwin, and then baba, Mr. Williams. Send for votes. Okay, let's try it. I need Mr. Larkin and Mr. Williams. Those are the only two that I don't show. Mr. Larkin?
It's good.
There we go.
Got it.
Okay.
New business?
Introduce an ordinance approving the attached cooperative endeavor agreement by and among the Red River Waterway District, the City of Bossier City, and the City of Shreveport for the installation of a programmable LED light system on the Texas Street Bridge and authorizing Mayor Lorenz Walker to execute the same.
So move.
Questions from the audience? Believe we have some comments from the council?
I did want to just report to the council, I think the last time that we took this up at our meeting, we said that we'd go look into it, see a little bit more about the details of just exactly what we were doing. One of the things that I will say to the council that I think many in the public are operating on is that, is that this lighting was going to do two things. One, illuminate the bridge as it states here in a, in a, in a, in a artistic way to make it attractive. I think, and I may just be only one of seven, that I thought in, in addition to that, that at the same time, the lighting problems that are there with the bridge right now would be resolved. And it, for what it's worth, it only became apparent to me about a week ago that this did not address the roadway lighting that's on the bridge now that does not operate, or maybe better said, only one half of it operates. And when I found that out, much, much like the rest of this, I just looked into it and found that just because of the age of the roadway lighting and the age of the agreement, however it did exist at the time that it was made, does no longer exists in anyone's files that we know of on this side of the river. And, and then furthermore, that the, those aging lights are only, only one half of them operate at night. Happens to be the, the half that is on Bossier City's side. And I, I believe that I have come to understand that, that the agreement that does not exist in, in writing at this time, apparently makes it the obligation for Bossier City to split half with Shreveport. And I'm thinking that's more or less the way the deal is. And when I found that, one, the, the lights weren't working, and two, that we didn't have an agreement in place, it was my intent prior to this coming before the council to suggest in, in some forum that we at least include, perhaps preferentially and first and foremost, a, a budget and a, an agreement that addresses, addresses that, the roadway lighting first and foremost. And my logic there is just simply that it just seems like it would be a travesty to, to spend a couple million dollars or three or four million dollars illuminating the bridge and make it a beautiful thing of art, and then not actually have the, the roadway itself operating at its highest potential for, for safety and, and for standard roadway illumination. And so, given that observation, it would be my suggestion that we consider including that in this agreement, particularly since we don't have an agreement right now. You know, we, we have roadway lighting that's there, we have road lighting that doesn't work, we have roadway lighting that is apparently, you know, shared by the two cities, and, and for whatever reason, it's not working. And so, so I would, I would urge the council to, to include that and perhaps have this broadened to include that roadway lighting and, and then also make sure that whatever cost is involved in getting the roadway lighting working correctly, now that it is, it's ancient, that that be addressed at least at the same time, if not before, we, we undertake to, to make the, the bridge the beautiful thing that I think it could and should be, and that the city should share responsibility for. So that's my, that's my suggestion, and I, I'll throw it out there for, I'm one-seventh of the group up here, and perhaps someone else has another opinion about it.
Yeah, I'd like to, you know, when we first got this agreement, you know, our biggest problem was there was an unknown cost for maintenance or repair of the lights for the bridge, and that's why we voted it down. Of course, with our attorneys and speaking with everybody on the council, we, we all agreed, we didn't want this unknown cost forever of maintenance or repair. So the Red River Waterway Commission, and going through our attorneys, looking at it, they redid this agreement, our attorneys approved it, and I think we was all happy with it. And I understand what Tim is saying, but this agreement is with the Red River Waterway Commission. You know, they're giving us a million dollars to do this, and I don't think, the overhead lights, the roadway lights, and I know it came up in the meeting that we had Pam, that we paid for half, they pay for half. Shouldn't it be an agreement? Probably, probably should, but not in this agreement, because this is us in Shreveport with the Red River Waterway Commission, has nothing to do with the overhead lights on the bridge. So that's my, and I told Tim this a while ago, I disagreed with it, but again, it's strictly what the council wishes to do.
Again, and just, just no real strong feelings about anything that's against it. Just, it, it appears to me that it would just come across to the, the citizens, first and foremost, our responsibility is to, is to deliver a, a safe roadway and a safe bridge that connects the two cities. And, and technically, we, we certainly have a safe roadway, we have a safe bridge, but we don't have it at its highest point of safety because the safety devices on it are not working properly, and, and it indicates that there's a failure of an agreement between the parties that operate that, because it is that way. And it just seems to me that it's a little much to be now planning to go actually make a, an artful thing out of it before we, before we formalize an agreement and put into place equipment that's updated and an agreement that operates and, and exists.
Jimmy, do you think it's appropriate to have the roadway lighting incorporated in this particular issue with the, you don't think?
I don't think it involves the Red River Waterway Commission. To me, that would be a separate issue to undertake, you know, with Shreveport.
So we could task the administration to come up with a, a separate agreement regarding the roadway lighting?
Sure.
That, that would be my preference, is to address it under a separate...
Yeah, and I think we need also get with the mayor and see if you could get somebody to get with their people, our people get with their people, you know, to, to get an agreement. I mean, like I said, every day, it's worked throughout the years, and even though that side is not working, you know, I understand Tim's issue, but is that something that you think we need to get a agreement? It probably is, but who can you get to do that, Mayor?
It's a vote to introduce it. We have a first and a second. All right, counsel, please cast your vote. Nothing?
Hit the side.
I just sent them again.
As long as we're done before Christmas Eve, I'm good.
Okay, Mr. Free, Mr. Darby, Mr. Larkin, Mr. Montgomery, I just need your votes.
All right.
Okay, number two. Introduce an ordinance approving a license... Introduce an ordinance approving a license and naming agreement between the city of Bossier City and Brookshire, Brookshire's Grocery Company and authorizing Mayor Lorenz Walker to execute any and all documents in conjunction therewith. First reading.
So moved.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Council, please cast your vote.
Number three, introduce an ordinance prohibiting the operation of electric low-speed scooters on any sidewalk, bicycle path, public rights of way, streets or highways within the city limits of Bossier City except residential areas. First reading.
So moved.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Council, please cast your vote.
Introduce an ordinance amending ordinance 128 of 2019 appropriating an additional $244,000.670 and 34 cents from the jail and municipal capital building fund for the completion of a concrete flood wall for the place evidence and storage building. First reading.
So moved.
Second.
Questions from the audience?
If, I think it's noteworthy to have an explanation so that y'all understand that this is a pretty substantial change order for the job, which was, I don't know, originally six or 700,000. So, it was something unforeseen, and I think it's noteworthy for the record to understand what happened.
President Montgomery, council, mayor, this is a change order primarily to address some unforeseen, what I call unforeseen subsurface conditions. A bit of a surprise, but y'all may be more aware of what that property used to be used for than we do, but when the construction of the wall was ongoing, about 40% of it encountered a concrete slab that was over six foot deep. And much like on the first phase of the Carriageway, the big spoil area that had to be excavated and removed before they could come in and build the, the road up, this is a similar situation. And we, we looked, we couldn't find any records within the city that would tell us where the limits of that were and what it was, but by and large, that, that increase is related to removing that. There were a couple other little odds and ends in working with the staff over there just to automate the pumping system a little bit better and things like that, but the, the big bulk of that is for the concrete mess.
All right, thank you.
Any questions? Thank you all.
Council, please cast your vote.
Adopt a resolution to fill a vacant equipment operator one position in Public Works. First and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Council, please cast your vote.
Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of a wastewater treatment plant operator for public utilities. First and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Council, please cast your vote.
Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of a personnel records clerk for Human Resources Department. First and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Council, please cast your vote.
Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of a meter reader for the customer service department. First and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Council, please cast your vote. Hmm? We've got an add-on.
And the reports?
New business.
I'm sorry.
Add-on.
Adopt a resolution changing the name of Century Link Center Drive to Brookshire Grocery Arena Drive. First and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Questions from the audience?
All right, under reports, we have Mr. Ben Roshenbach, city engineer with the monthly project report.
And I think you need to turn your, the clicker on, the power's on.
Update the council and mayor on the various workings of the engineering department here in Bossier City. Currently over 151 million in ongoing design and construction projects. 81 million of that is under construction. We've got seven projects in design or bid phase, 23 projects under construction, and seven subdivisions in or nearing the construction phase. Walter O'Bigby Carriageway Phase One, it's a good picture here, you can kind of see a project is really taking shape. The, the whole corridor there is looking a whole lot better. Working through some minor items, thank you for approving the beautification ordinance, that's going to help clean up some of these areas. Currently showing them about 57 days behind, but they are on target to meet the January 14th deadline, and we're, we're excited to put that one behind us. Phase Two, Justin was here last meeting and gave y'all a, a pretty big update on that. I don't think I need to get into any more details unless there's something specific you, you might have on that, but we continue to pound and pound and pound with utility relocation permits and the like to get that project on the street.
Are we still, yeah, on schedule to bid in January?
That's my understanding. Swan Lake Road, main thing to report here is it, in, in meetings last week with the parish, Best Jet Construction indicated that their plan is to have the ramps that are located on the east side of that overpass, which would be the onbound east ramp and the outbound west ramp, to have those open by Friday. If they are not, then Best Jet Construction will continue to work until those are open. They normally take off this time of year, but they're not taking off until those ramps are open. Then the next ramps, what I would call on the east, or excuse me, on the west side of the project, they will be closing those shortly after January 4th to get those done. They're going to take a little longer, there's more construction required for those ramps, there's some subsurface drainage and things that they've got to work on. You know, we hemmed and hawed, you know, you're trying to predict the weather and everything else, we just said, look, we, we got to get it moving. So, that's the plan, but there'll be a little break between Christmas and New Year's through that corridor before they start on the next phase of that work. Innovation Drive, project is complete, working through some, some punchless items, one being the lighting. We did learn that AEP will take delivery of their materials this week and start working on the main primary power that's going to feed that whole area. John Kelly with Traffic Engineering has worked with AEP to energize on the east and west side at least a portion of the lighting up to the center. So, we're, we're with the help of councilman Montgomery and, and others, working to get AEP out there and get done. It's a pretty big undertaking that they've got to do out there, so.
I do want to thank them for responding to our phone call and making things happen. So, it's greatly appreciated, and the people that travel that road will start seeing lights soon, so.
We're working with the design engineers that are working for the property owners out there on annexation and some other items going on on that property, so we, we, we're encouraged. I think there's a, a real interest to develop there. I've used the road, probably saved me 15 minutes the other day, so I'm proud to have it. Melrose Drive Extension, contractor, they've done a little work out there, we don't expect to see them in earnest until after the first of the year, but that project is, is rolling. Coleman Street, that's kicking off on, I think it's on, yeah, December 28th is when Specialty Track Co. will be there to start work on that. We'll be reaching out to Bossier High and letting them know that that's coming down. AEP has some work, they're finishing up out there, and Clinton has been coordinating with them and specialty on ensuring that whatever needs to be moved first, that they work on that, get that out of the way. But excited to see that one coming down the pipe, it's going to be an exciting project for that area. Max Bayou, it's complete, left some punchless items out there, really pleased with how well that project turned out. The burn building you can see is coming up, got some concrete slab out there, they're, we're showing by math a little behind, but they're on schedule. I don't know, the, the fire department's anxious to get that one going. We've got the animal control facility really starting to take shape out there. They picked up a little time, they've actually started moving into portions of the facility and using it, so they continue to get things done. That's a pretty complicated little project. Tinsley Athletic Ball Field, there's a good picture of, of one of the fields with turf on it. That project is starting to take shape, we're, we think we've turned the corner on that, they're making up time, getting a lot of work done, the weather's been very favorable. That's going to be a, a, a jewel for the baseball community in this area for sure. Public Service Commission Lighting, I don't know if you've been out to the police station or in the Public Works Building, but a lot of that's done, we're putting them at, you know, by the math here, 20% complete, they're much further along than, than that, and I was over there today, it looks really nice. Oh, this, that, the other one's Century Link, so this is a good picture of, I believe that's the police building there, as you can kind of see. If you're not familiar with that, it doesn't look like much, but the new lighting's, it's a big difference, really big difference. East Bank Restrooms, we got the keys today, there's still some work being done, we've got some painting touch-up and things of the like, but we'll be handing the keys over on that this week. Looking forward to having that one behind us. Field of Dreams, talked to Mike this morning about that project. Contractors a little behind, but they had some equipment delivery problems, material delivery problems. We're waiting on some documentation from them to get that formalized into change order, but they are continuing to make good progress out there. Citywide Street Improvements, just to update everybody, we did meet with each of the five councilmen last week. Thought that that meeting was very productive, at least it was for us, because it got us fine-tuned into the nitty-gritty. We're looking at six projects, one for each district, and then one set aside sidewalk project that we're working on currently to get out to contractors for bids in late January. This was the map we showed last month, but this is a, a better idea of each district, kind of hones in on where the sidewalk repairs are, panel street, panel section repairs, street repairs and the like. I didn't mention on here, I don't know, I don't, I don't think Clinton, that $12 million number came down a little bit after meeting with all the council members and getting a better understanding of what was within those budgets, so we're a little more encouraged about that, and I would say at the next meeting, we'll have sort of a preliminary outlook on the five-year capital improvement plan and show you that in detail, what that looks like. I don't need to get into these, but just to give you some idea, this, this is, and we gave, gave each of the council members this, so now you have a little better visual as to what's going on. Private Development, again, you're looking at Willow Lake there and the Enclave, but those are all the developments under construction, and we're hearing that the, that the community needs a little more volume. Houses are selling like hotcakes around here, and there's not enough of them to sell. Projects in bid are out in design, the Highway 71 lighting project, Phase Two, that's south of the Jimmy Davis Bridge. We've got 90, I think they call it final preliminary plans yesterday on that, so we're reviewing those, we're submitting permits for that project. That'll be a nice project for South Bossier. The East Bank Fire Station, we'll be looking to rebid that early in the year, next year. Tinsley, what we call the Tinsley ADA restroom, the design is complete, we're working on bids for that project now. We've got the design underway on the Clifford Almond Park restroom or the Swan Lake Ballpark South Bossier miscellaneous capital improvements, those are in design and nearing completion. And then we started work on a left-turn lane there at Highway 71 at Golden Meadows, we're in the early stages to really hit the ground running on that early in the year. Honorable mentions, not a lot's changed in flood management, we continue to press to, to get Bossier at the table at all of these various meetings. Traffic engineering, just quick update, urban systems, they are working on analyzing the data, they have that in hand, we've been batting some information back and forth over the last couple of days on that, but nothing to report just yet. Interesting meeting we had last week with regard to kind of a joint project, the Bossier Parish Police Jury is working to extend the left-turn lanes for access to I-220 at LA3, and looking to Bossier to support in the funding of that effort. We had John Kelly there, our traffic engineering superintendent with the parish, working through some of the nuances with that project. It's going to be good for our area to have that done. Just a little blip here that I think is worth mentioning, the, we're in what we would consider the very early stages of traffic signalization software upgrades, all of that is old, it's not on Windows 10, there's over 80 different signals that are going to need some attention in the, in the near future, but we don't have hard edges on that to bring to the council yet, it's just something we're working on. Property Standards is out and grinding, had a long meeting with all their various vendors last week, and they're continuing to work to get, get the community last week, and they're continuing to work to get the community cleaned up. Any questions?
Can you have a couple minutes after this?
Yes, sir, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Ms. Stacy Fernandez with the monthly finance report.
Good afternoon, council. I've distributed the financial reports for November 2020. On page one, our revenue is at 108%. A portion related to sales tax for the general fund is at 106%. Expenses by fund are at 92%. Page three is our sales tax. You can see for the month of November over November, we're up 11.1%. Year-to-date, we're up 2.2%, and if we back out the audits, we'd be down 4.6%. Page four is our manning. We're at 668 employees compared to last month's 666, which is 30 below the budget. Finally, our water and sewer reports, kind of a tight month, we did 74%, but year-to-date, we're still at 108%. To budget, we're 95, and the rolling 12 months is 119. Any questions?
Questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other business, Mayor? Well?
Mr. President, I've got something.
Oh, you do?
Sure.
Okay.
Do you mind? Right ahead, yes. This is our last meeting of the year, and I just, and I know they feel the same way, I want to thank Phyllis for taking care of all of us throughout the year. I mean, she does keep us straight, I don't know how she can keep seven guys straight, but she does. And of course, we have Jennifer that fills in when Phyllis is sick, she just doesn't get down here as much.
Which is normally a lot better, just not today.
Oh, you did fine, it just, you got to come down here more. Anyway, I want to thank her for doing that also.
Absolutely.
Well, in light of that too, I would also like to thank the entire team outside of the city council, which is under the tutelage of our mayor, Lo Walker, and that includes all the public safety, police, fire, water and sewer, public utilities, all the support staff from accounting to water billing, I mean, everyone. This has been a tough year, to say the least, for everyone, and on behalf of the council, I just want to let you know how proud we are to be the elected officials and help in assistance with the jobs that you provide, and I'd put every one of you against anybody in the United States of America. So on behalf of that, congratulations for a wonderful year, and there's no further business. On behalf of the council, Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to everyone. Meeting adjourned.
Mr. Free?